I'm a foster kid, I'm in foster. I gotta pay for it. I'm about to be a college student, so I have to pay for all my school. And with you, how you run it up against the Paul Ryan budget, it's gonna cut all those budgets. It's gonna cut all the money for me to help you go to school. Like, I'm a foster kid and I'm unemployed, so I don't have family or anyone to help me pay for school. I gotta pay for school myself, or I have the government help me. So, you know, you gotta represent for your constituents because we're, we're your constituents, but we have our own voice, and we vote for you so you can represent our voice. So, we need you to represent our voice in a way that it needs to be represented. We need change. We need possible change. And that's change that you can help make, but I don't, I don't know. It seems like you don't wanna talk to your people. So, if you can, if you can help make a change, 'cause you hear, well, you hear all of our problems and you can actually help fix it. If you can fix those, if you can actually help fix those problems, I know they're not all manageable, but I know you can do something to help us, 'cause, you know, we need whatever we can possibly get. So, my name is Markell, and that's all I really have to say. Thank you.
My name is Paulie Arbour. I was at the last meeting. And I'm just a quieting you for supporting the budget, the Ryan budget, especially because it proposed to cut over seven hundred billion in services to Medicare. Obamacare isn't even in the feds, for that matter. But with mature people like my seventy-four-year-old husband who will continually see needed medical treatment, it's much more pressing issues that you need to address. It's a constantly supporting vote to appeal the act already in Supreme Court. Why are you still against this bill, is the majority in support? Well, that's it. Get away from the ball.
Hey, Mr. Lundgren, my name is Marcus Fox, I represent Ranch River. And Ranch River, I guess you guys just consider an urban neighborhood. To add to that, we call it the hood. And, you know, it makes it harder on us when we live in the hood, and you can't come out here, you can't come talk to us. I've been hoping to speak to you, and you couldn't respond to it. I work hard. I currently work, I mean, I don't know if I work hard, you know. You guys might come in there, work thirty days a week, that's about, that's about it, that's me. I'm getting paid eight dollars an hour, I'm telling you, it's not worth it. We need, we need minimum wage, grades, we need college run grades, we need a whole lot. We need support in the hood. And there's a lot of smart people in a dumb neighborhood dealing with the dumb government. So, you know, that's smart people in the hood where you can't come talk to. You know, we're actually here trying to educate ourselves. We don't have any programs. We don't have, we don't get good tricks. You know, it's harder, it's harder on us, but it doesn't make us, and it doesn't change us from who we really are. We're smart people, we're constituents, and we're part of your community. That's it.
Hi, my name is Jasmine. I'm from Folsom, and I have a couple of concerns that I wanted to address. First thing is, I'm a very hard-working student. I just spent countless nights sleeping through nights studying and studying to learn how to make a better life for me and my family. And unfortunately, I go through a family who are paying a hundred thousand dollars out of pocket to get an education, and most people can't. So, I have to turn to the government to get along, whatever means they can, to be able to continue education. At eight percent interest rate, by the time I can afford to go to the years, that hundred thousand dollars would be the hundred thousand dollars. I don't think it's fair. I work so hard to do what I need to do to pay that outrageous interest fee on a hundred thousand dollars. And then again, even though I make it top dollar, more dollars, more money than minimum wage, I end up having to get minimum wage because I have to pay close to a thousand dollars in fees just to pay my student loans back, on top of rent, on top of everything else. I don't think it's fair and needed to be able to work, to have to work so hard to do that, only to work to an amount and get the same dollars as a person who, who doesn't have a master's degree. And then the thing I wanted to address is the tossing and turning that varies hell on, on my parents. I think it's a wonderful program. There's a couple of things there that I may not agree with on a personal level, but the, often the services provided help, it helps educate people and helps prevent people from getting STDs or getting pregnant, or have methods of getting things that otherwise are not, they're not able to get. You know, as a person who wants to see less unexpected surprises, I think the mission, the government should start going back and forth on, on whether they should keep our parents educating us or not. Thank you.
Will you be this going to, I first of all start by thanking both Folsom for having us here. It's a nice facility. And I say that to say, we've had a couple of conversations about you, your ADA bill, you wanna water it down and make it harder for the disabled to sue. You know, coming to this building is really nice for everybody to walk through these doors, and nobody's in convenience. What you're being able to do is it will allow businesses to break the law, and then after somebody's been hurt, they have to write a letter and say, "Well, you know, I didn't enjoy the restaurant, you know, you have thirty days to fix it." I don't understand why McDonald's, Burger King, Taco Bell, they don't have an issue with ADA deserve to love. I mean, to tell their people, you know, it's like, hey, okay, we can't, we can't make it like civil rights. We'll just make civil rights weaker for the people out here because law enforcement can't follow. You can't do that. And that's what I'd like to talk about. And it's a question I've asked. We've been at your office, and I mentioned it the other day, and I didn't really get an answer, but I, I've been at your office, it was all fourteen of us, and the majority was African-American. We came in to ask you a question. We were told you were in town. We said, "Well, we'll see you, but you should give us a call." I mean, just give us a call. Say hi. Say we know we're here. We didn't get any call from you. We've been, we've been several, to your office and several times asking. And I, I mentioned it to you the last time, Paulie, you know, I kind of feel bad because I asked you if it was a racial reason why you didn't wanna live with us. And I did feel bad, you know, this society built the things up like that, like. But then I come into this meeting today, and I hear several people saying, "I came into your office, and I got responses back." Now, you have fourteen people that make schedules, schedules to schedule, and we didn't get any response back. So, the question's still on the table, is, is there a race reason why you didn't answer? And with that, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Congressman Lundgren, constituents, my name is Billy. I'm from Zacharana. I wanna talk to you today about an issue that I think is Baltimore's problem given today's audience and my friends at the Credo Super PAC. What I wanna talk about is campaign, by campaign finance. When one individual, which for some reason today includes corporations, can dump billions of out-of-state dollars into a campaign to try to sway the vote, what has democracy become? When a corporation can spend unlimited amounts on a candidate who will back his policies that serve their interests, not the interests of the people, and effectively buy it a race, what has democracy become? Is this still a government of we, the people, or is this a government of corporations and money? On Tuesday, you criticized your opponent, Omibera, for receiving money from out-of-state when you yourself received over half a million dollars from American Crossroads, Carlowe Super PAC, last election. In conclusion, my question to you, Congressman, is what will you do about campaign finance reform? Because things are not all right the way they are. I do not see the America that I learned about in grade school. When I look at the political atmosphere of today, I just see legalized corruption. And if your answer is to do nothing, if you choose not to answer my question, then I will continue to do everything in my power to make sure you're defeated in November. Because I know that America can do better. And if you aren't ready to help, then I am ready to walk you to the door. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Joanna Scott. And I guess I'm sort of broken hearted tonight. I feel that we're all in need, but it's like, aye, 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 aye. I forget, I think we forget that we are the Americans, and we are the ones that have to do it. Please forgive me if I'm found sort of critical. I'm not candy critical. I am fearful. I'm afraid that if this election goes the way it may go, we all will be in great need. And of course, my need is like, take the pure way. I have grandchildren, I have family, and I would like to see them, see in America that I knew, I know I'm older than a lot, and it's good to see the young people, and it's the freedom that they have to ask for help. The thing is, I felt that the churches were there, that people, your family, your neighbors, is all there. But we have to be the one to do it. We can't rely on just all the congressmen and senators. But I would like to see us stop back and think about what we're doing. We're asking constantly, "Well, what can we do ourselves?" I, as a Christian, I would stand and say, "Let's pray." And also, I would like to see the churches get more involved in either, either the court or do what we can. But of course, our congressmen and our presidents have to make some kind of a, some way to make jobs. And I'm not hearing jobs, I'm hearing schools and needs and other things. But let's all go back to where we started from, our roots, it's our we, ourselves, not somebody, somewhere in another office. It's us that has to do the work. And I hope that we're all aware, yes, it's nice to have help, but let's look where we go for our help.
Good evening, Congressman. My name is Scott Sanders. I'm from Zacharana, and I am a six-year veteran of the US Navy as a December officer. You may remember me from two nights ago when I was at the Oprah O'Town Hall. I was one of the early questioners. And my question, I read it till the end politely, and I did not receive an answer at all. Perhaps you forgot, I wish to have a lot of people. Luckily, I went towards the end, so should stick. And it's, now that Paul Ryan is the vice presidential select for the Republican Party, should the Republican Party adopt his bill in stance on Medicare reform as official party platforms? Thank you.
Good evening, Congressman Wallace, I was from Folsom, retired from the Army.
I'd like to know, Congressman Lundgren, what, who in Congress are going to counter the president's counterbalance of the president's use of executive orders to accomplish legislative purposes that have not or would not be approved by Congress?
Good evening, Representative Lundgren. My name is Alex Bauer, Ranch Riviera. I've been a teacher for twenty years, and I just want to let you know that I have no child left behind, and the race at the top, I do not work. We're teaching our students how to bubble in on tests, and that's not preparing them for the 21st century. And if we wanna talk about limiting the influence and size of the federal government, I don't know what the federal government's doing in education. So, let's bring that back down to states, let's work on it at that level. I know that might be a lot of money, but I think that's what we need to look at in terms of reducing size of the government in one aspect. Also, I wanna comment on the popularity rating in Congress. I think the popularity rating in Congress is in the teens. Is it a hundred percent? A hundred percent? It makes, it makes the approval rating of doors of the Bushland very good, very high. So, Mr. Lundgren, you're either part of the problem or you're part of the solution. I'd like to know what you're gonna do to try to increase the popularity in Congress.
Good evening, Mr. Lundgren. My name is Jennifer. I'm around with the team at Folsom. I believe you have a constituent that came to you today in need. Your Augustus Montaukton, I would like to see you, I'm sure we would all like to see you. Take this man's name and help him with his mortgage. He started to leave, and I went and brought him back. You did not. I did. Will you please show us that you are ready to help him? Can you see you take his name? And ask him to help him. He is in need, right here in front of you today. Okay, would you please help your constituents? Any of that? But you haven't heard forever and ever and ever and ever. That's not how it's supposed to work. No, they are screaming you along. Am I correct, people?
Hi, Mr. Lundgren. Please stand. I've talked to you several times, or attempted to, talked to you on public government into your office, and I'm one of those ignored constituents. However, I would like to thank you that you seem to feel that everybody was concerned about themselves. Well, I am a social worker. I have a master's degree in social working and am back to school with three young children that I see no child support on. I put myself in college. I have not worked in six years because the government has cut all the funding for mental health and social services. People don't have, they don't have food, they don't have places to live. I have my son-in-law has served in the military. He's been dragged down to stand, and I backed five times. He just got back again. I have two grandchildren. I want those men back. Okay, I'm sorry. We, as United States citizens, all of us, want to have social security that we know we can depend on, not, not just for those who are over fifty-five, but I want my children, I want my children. I want the people who were put in into some of the mortgages that they got, and now they don't have it. They don't have the houses. It's really sad. It's all of the military men who lost their houses while they were fighting for this country.
That's right, that's right.
Now, I do owe us, I don't care what your religion is, I don't care if you're Republican. You owe us your loyalty. We sent you to Congress, and we have to ask you for help. I can't run to Washington and talk to people. You are my representative, and you have to listen to us, please.
I'll try and cover as much as I can in a short period that's left. On fraud investigations, I was just speaking with the US attorney for this district, and they have probably as many fraud investigations on mortgages as any US attorney's office in the country, and they're proceeding with that. There is a paper in the US Justice Department where they have given a number of prosecutors and investigators to that, and they have ensured us that where they have found that appearance of those that you suggested fraud, that they lose those to get mortgages that they prosecute. With respect to the question of no child left behind, I have supported eliminating the requirements of no child left behind, because frankly, I think, well, it was a good idea. Some thought was asked before I went to go to Congress in 2005. It has come, it has become one, and it was the federal government appears to have mandated too much on the schools, and frankly interfered with the schools because almost every school is different, every classroom is different. And they had the federal government somehow establish the rules and riggers of the day. I do think there ought to be an opportunity for parents to reopen judgments as to how well their schools are doing. And there ought to be some sort of ability to utilize and test them for that purpose. But I think beyond that, I would respect to that. With respect to money and campaigns, the state made good corporations have given monies to candidates. In fact, it is against the federal law. There's a felony of any corporations that give money to candidates, and then it's not allowed. It still remains to be so. Therefore, because of this Supreme Court decision, even the First Amendment, we have to finish which the court said, "Your First Amendment rights is not diminished because you express yourself with another." And you can associate yourself with another in a voluntary association, in a corporation, in a non-corporation. And that you do not have your First Amendment rights diminished because you talk along with somebody else. That is what it says. Therefore, it says that corporations can express a point of view. So, they can without ads, dealing with candidates. They cannot coordinate those ads with candidates, they cannot coordinate those ads with partners. If a corporation would give a single dollar to a candidate, they would be in violation of the law, and that is not changed. With respect to ADA access, it's kind of interesting for those who suggest that they've never met with them. We're the ones that met with me at the Metro Chamber of Commerce on the issue of ADA access to my bill, and we spent, I believe, close to an hour and a half on that. The fact that you disagree with me, and I disagree with you, does not mean we didn't talk. The fact of the matter is, you can have a disagreement. My bill would require someone who has agreements against a business to give them written notice of that grievance with enough particularity that the recipient would be able to understand what the access violation is. And then give the owner-operator a period of time in which to figure out how to deal with it, and then write and say how they're gonna deal with it, and then have a period of time in which to fix it. That does not undercut civil rights. In fact, the attempts to do is to stop what was known as drive-by litigation, or drive-by lawsuits, or drive-by threat letters. The attempts to try and get exactly what the ADA was designed for, which is access, not lawsuits, and not money, money to markets of some people. Make a claim that has anything to do with race, frankly, is not really useful for this point. In terms of student loans, I voted for the bill that allowed for the continuation of the subsidization of student loan. We have to have a different mechanism for paying for it than the bill the administration proposed. Doesn't mean that I was against voting for subsidized rates. And, you know, I don't get it. My mother did not have the chance to go to college. My mother did not have the chance to go to high school. She graduated from high school after she had, well, it meant to raise some children and go to school at night to get her high school degree. When I met my wife, she was living in a trailer car. My wife was, her father died while she was in high school. My wife worked three jobs while she went to college, three jobs while she went to college. While she was in high school with a secret year, she was on a support program. She worked, she went to school for four hours, and she worked four hours. So, again, this suggestion that somehow people within politics or something don't understand these concerns, frankly, is not true. And what I tried to say at the beginning is we have, and I guess not too many heard me, we have four billion dollars a year that we are spending on the federal level for everything, including education, including national parks, including the military, including everything we do, and we don't have it. We have a trillion dollars of spending on everything that we don't have. And for me to get on here and say to you, "Don't worry, I'm gonna make sure we pay for everything we've already paid for, we're gonna continue paying it." And, you know, somebody's gonna pay it out alive. Too many politicians in the past have stood before people, and they promised us that they could compete. Then they get out of office before the chickens come on the roof. The fact of the matter is, we can't do that anymore. We are not creating jobs for children. I mean, for our young people, there will not be jobs for our children. The fact of the matter is, we're not creating jobs for those that are already working. Now, if you're wanting to try a system like in Europe, I guess you could. Not working too well. Hadn't worked very well for the last twenty or thirty years. There, the response has been repeatedly, have more government spending and higher taxes. It doesn't work. Why are we losing jobs out of California? Why are we losing major corporations out of California? Why do we lose the largest corporation in this area just last year, Texas? Because our taxes do, I have a regulatory structure such that they can't continue to work here. If that happens in California, that can happen for the nation. I am to support tax reform. I am to support the idea of, now, by this, I do have interruption. You've interrupted several people who were attempting to speak here. I would ask that we should give the stability, that you would give the stability to others that we have given to you. I know, it's too much shouting at people going on in politics and government today. And it may sound good, maybe good, but when you're filming out there, but I got it, it does not get the solution done. I was raised to show respect to people, even if I disagree with them, I would continue to do that, even though some people don't wish to do that, or others. My bottom line theory, all I can tell you is this. I voted for, and finally, the past this year, how did the Federal Reserve? I think we ought to have transkransics. We ought to know what it is that the Federal Reserve does. I think we ought to go back to the Federal Reserve having one purpose and one purpose alone, such as oil. And that is to keep a consistent currency. Meaning that the value of the dollar should remain what it is today for the foreseeable future. Because when you do not have that as your purpose, you are doing particular damage to senior citizens. Those are unfit to impact. Because the dollar they have in the pocket today is not gonna be worth that a month from now, a year from now, two years from now, and they are at least able to be able to raise prices because they're not out there working. And so, there's a great temptation for government to do what was suggested by these one speaker, and that is to monetize debt. If the government has a tremendous amount of debt out there, and we do, in trillions, one of the ways to pay off is to make it worth less. How do you do that? You print more and more and more and more dollars, so the debt is worth less. But if the debt is worth less, so is what you have in your pocket worth less. And I fear that we are doing that to ourselves. The fact of the matter is, the president's healthcare bill does take over seven hundred billion dollars out of Medicare. The president has said that much. Boy, I can tell you that some people just don't want to have their opportunity to talk, and then others don't. The president himself has said that he has taken, he's big, just to keep money out. The termination of the amount has been done by a little dog. You really think that enhances faith? Maybe you do. I don't think that has, I think that's a bell conversation. I don't think it does. Do you think that gets us to a solution? I don't think it does. But I'm one of those who believes that we need some more stability in politics, we need some more stability in Congress, we need more stability in the President, in Congress. And I hope, one by one, we'll be able to reestablish that stability. Fact of the matter is, the President's bill does cap over $700 billion out of Medicare. Why do I know that? Because they came to Congress and said that that was one of the ways we're going to stabilize Medicare. Unfortunately, when the chief actuary for Medicare came before the House Budget Committee, he had to say, when he was testifying, answering a specific question, that unfortunately, the President double counted that $700 billion. Once for savings for Medicare, in which it would help Medicare be more solid. But they also then counted it as paying for the new programs under Obamacare. It can't double count. Fact of the matter is, it does in fact take that away from Medicare. There are specifics on it, and one of the doctors on my staff that can give you the very specifics on it came writing exactly where it takes place. It takes it out of Medicare. That does not help solve problems of solvency in Medicare. So I want to talk about the panel that was established. The purpose of the panel is explained by the administration, was that was the way in which they were going to get the handle on costs. It has a model after which it is drawn, and that is a model of great Britain, of their condition called NICE. And I see where they make determinations as to what procedures will be allowed, what procedures will not be allowed of payment. That is what they explain as the mechanism by which they control spending. You can say that that is a reasonable way of doing it. I believe that places that border between you and your doctor in terms of determining what you will be allowed ahead. So, what do we on the other side do with our proposal? We use choice and competition. We try and set up a mechanism that is based on the prescription drug formula. It allows the element of competition to go in, where all of these different programs, much like the federal employment plan, have to submit their plans before the Medicare, before Medicare authorities. And make sure that they qualify for the minimum comprehensive coverage that is going to be required by law. Then, the government basically requires bids. What the government would do would be to take the second lowest bid that provides comprehensive care and use that as a baseline for the contribution that will be made on behalf of those who choose that program. If you choose the one that is less than that, you will get the difference. You will actually get paid the difference by the government. If you choose one that is a higher cost, the government will still pay to that association or that provider the amount that was at that level determined by negotiation, but you will pay an additional premium if that's what you want for additional coverage. It is based on, oh, and the option that you can remain in Medicare for a week. Now, this is for people 54 and under. For anybody 55 and older, under the plan that we voted for, so-called Ryan Plan, there are no changes at all, none, zero. You still qualify with the current Medicare program as it exists. Now, why do we take a model after the Part D in Medicare prescription drug? Because it has come in 43% below projected costs. And in terms of surveys among seniors, it is one of the most favored parts of Medicare. So we try to take what worked there, use that as a model to put in our system. And the proposal that we voted on that we have now is not the original Ryan proposal, it is one that's along the contours of the Ryan White approach articulated in the White Paper that we put out. The original idea of this, that is, the way the support would take place, came out of a commission that was established by President Clinton, headed up by former Democratic Senator John Bro. It's the Bro Commission recommendations that the Ryan proposal was based on. So it has a roots, a bipartisan approach that was started under a commission established by President Clinton. That's what we are attempting to do with that. Does nothing, zero, no changes for anybody 55 and older, for those 54 and below that can stay on it. Or, if you move to this other option that we have completely, many that want to move to, and it does two things. It moves towards access and it also moves towards bringing the cost of that, of healthcare down. Because right now, the way how Medicare is constructed, it is not anything that helps bring prices down. It tends to be one of the things that accentuates the acceleration across a Medicare area.
So in other words, if you throw someone under the bus...
If anybody wants to say they're throwing someone under the bus because you're trying to save Medicare, I guess you could say that, but I did take logic in Congress, and that is illogical. There is something called the principle of non-protection. Something can't both be and not be at the same time. And when you guarantee that people have the right to Medicare, and when you guarantee the stability of the system, it's hard to say you're trying to destroy the system. As a matter of fact, the statement that the Ryan Plan ends Medicare was called by Plutus Axe, which is a non-partisan organization, as the biggest lie of 2011. So you can continue to talk about it if you want, but I think it is not supported by Congress. Now, look, my idea of safety net is it ought to be a trailing, not a quick, not a quick sale. It ought to be something that supports people when they actually need it, because everyone is incented to get out of the safety net if they can, rather than the market. I don't think a market of compassionate society is the number of people that we get on food stamps, the number of people we get on welfare. Frankly, I think it's the number of jobs we have and to compare... All right, I'm sorry, I thought I could continue, but there's one person who determines that this is not appropriate. Where are the jobs in the question I've asked? We have followed the President's plan for the last ten and a half years. He guaranteed that if we follow his plan and we pass a stimulus, that we would have 5.3% unemployment. We have 8.3% unemployment, not the longest period of time in the history of the nation that we've had unemployment over 8%. We have the longest period of time, on average, of people who are unemployed. That is not a mark of success. You know, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again expecting a different result. The President has asked us to double down on what he said. It hasn't worked, it doesn't work. They tried it in Japan, it didn't work, it was a Fed that lost that day. They tried it in Europe. I frankly don't want to go on the path to Spain. I'd like to go on the path back to what was the American economic experience. Because I do believe that there's something more than the state. It's called society. It's made up of the state, it's made up of families, it's made up of individuals, it's made up of churches, it's made up of voluntary organizations. And I know I have a disagree with a number of this room, but I do not believe that government is the end-all and be-all. It has an appropriate area in which it ought to operate without being limited. And if we are going to restore ourselves back to the economic level that's necessary to give our kids a chance for the future, we're going to have to change course. And I support changing course. Thank you.